Welcome everyone to the City of Daily City's Recreation Meeting for March 26. And at this time, just a couple announcements for those wishing to address the Recreation Commission on any item on the agenda or under public appearance oral communication, please complete a spirit card located at the entrance to the City Council Chambers and submit them to staff members as early in the meeting as possible. And also persons with disabilities who require auxiliary aids or services in attending or participating in this meeting should call the Department of Library and Recreation Services as soon as possible prior to the meeting. And that said, may I have everyone all rise to the pledge of the flag, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a roll call, please?
Certainly may. Commissioner Ortiz?
Here.
Commissioner Luna?
Here.
Commissioner Landos?
Present.
Commissioner Flamenco, we hope is on her way, and Chair Pastor?
Here. All right. First item on this evening's agenda is the approval of this evening's agenda. May I have an approval of that, please?
Second.
Okay. Those in favor of approving this evening's agenda do say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And also the approval of the previous month's minutes. May I have a motion on that, please?
Second as well.
Okay. Those in favor of approving the last month's minutes do say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. At this time, we have presentations in terms of the reorganization of this evening's commission. And at this point, I'd like to enter a motion to approve or put into motion to approve Christina as our chair. And would I have any thoughts to add or a second to that motion?
I have a second before we continue. Do we need to do a roll call again now that everyone's here or no?
Typically, the way this would work is you would open floor for nominations for the position of chair.
Okay.
It sounds like you've made a nomination for chair.
Right.
You're looking for a second.
Okay.
And then after that, you would see if there were any more nominations.
Okay.
Close the nominations and then vote on the nominations in order which they were made.
Do we have a second on the initial motion to consider Christina as our chair going forward?
You have a second.
Okay. Would there be any other nominees that we'd like to include in that nomination? Thing that there is none, that'll close the nomination for this. Do we?
We can do a roll call vote.
And this takes us to a roll call vote to have Christina as our new chair going forward. Do we have a roll call on that?
You do. So the vote is to confirm Christina Luna as Chair of the Recreation Commission. Commissioner Ortiz?
Does a yes for me.
Commissioner Luna?
Yes.
Commissioner Landos?
Yes.
Commissioner Flamenco?
Yes.
And Chair Pastor?
Yes.
At this point, you can vacate your seat.
Okay.
We did not.
There's never rehearsal in these things.
You take over the meeting and the nominations for Vice Chair.
Okay. I open up the nomination for the Vice Chair.
At this point, I'd like to offer for nomination for the Vice Chair, Luis Landos?
Sure. Yeah.
Okay. And do we take it to?
Is that a second?
Second, yes.
Okay. And I think you open up to any other nominations?
Are there any other nominations?
Yes, I'd like to nominate myself for Vice Chair as well.
Can do that.
All right.
Second for that nomination.
Do we have a second for that nomination?
Second.
Well, we have a.
We have two nominations.
We have two nominations.
Have as many as you want.
Yeah.
At some point, we'll stop taking nominations and do a roll call vote.
Are there any more nominations for Vice Chair?
I am okay with him, with Nate being Vice Chair.
So y'all say yes for me.
Okay.
So you second?
Yeah.
There's already two nominations on the floor.
Two. But if there is, like I say, I'm okay with it either way.
Well, procedurally, we'll go through the roll call on both nominations and see where we end up. But before we get there, we need to close the nominations.
Okay. At this time, we'll close the nomination for Vice Chair.
Was that what you were doing?
Basically.
I'm sitting really close here in here. Okay. So we have two nominations and we'll do a roll call with the first nomination, which was for Commissioner Landos to be Vice Chair. Commissioner Ortiz?
Yes.
Commissioner Pastor?
Yes.
Commissioner Landos?
Yes.
Commissioner Flamenco?
Yes.
And Chair Luna?
Yes.
So that motion passes, so the other motion dies floating out there.
Mm-hmm.
And Commissioner Landos is the Vice Chair.
Okay. Well, through the chair, I'd like to say thank you for the nominees that offered to step forward to lead the Recreation Commission going forward. It's going to be exciting times as we move forward in the new year and the years to come. So any way we can help to, with your agenda and your thoughts, we're there for you.
Thank you so much.
For sure.
So moving on to the Director's Report.
Good evening, Madam Chair. The first item that we have tonight in the Director's Report is a review of our recently concluded Youth Basketball League. And here with us this evening is Jeanette to give us an overview, and I'll turn her PowerPoint back on.
My name is Jeanette. I see some new faces, so welcome to all of you. This year, I was in charge of the Youth Basketball League. It was an exciting league, to say the least. We had boys and girls divisions, third through eighth grade. Our third grade division is always instructional, so we do not promote competition, to say the least. We're trying to teach the kids still at that age how to play basketball, learn the fundamentals, and it works out really well for us, so we'd like to keep it that way. However, the rest of the league is designed to provide low-key competition. We emphasize on sportsmanship, fun, as always, and teamwork. All of our teams are coached by volunteer coaches, which is amazing. Registration in our league, there's a couple ways that you can join. One, you can go through our department and individually sign up, and that is basically for third through fifth graders. It goes all the way up through eighth, but we promote the third through fifth grade the most because we designed our middle school teams to be school teams to represent their school. However, we do get a lot of signups now for individuals beyond that age grade, so we accept those as well. We usually try to place six to 10 players per team, and they're all designed to be a Daily City team, so they come up with their own team name, and we place Daily City in front of it, so they're representing our city. A school team can come in as well. We have athletic directors who volunteer their time to go into the middle schools, or actually into the elementary schools as well, and they gather all the children, they collect all the money, they design everything, they get uniforms, they coordinate with all of their coaches, and they recruit them as well. And so it eliminates some of our stress of doing all that, and it's worked out really well for us over the years. The eligibility rules for the school teams are that all the children placed on a school team are from that school. Where it becomes tricky is sometimes we have kids sign up individually within our department who are in need of a team. Either we don't have any room for them on our Daily City teams, or we don't have enough signups in that division. So what we do from there is we offer the schools those children, and so we never want to turn anybody away. So that is our way of getting everybody involved in the program and trying to reach out to as many people as we can and not trying to turn anyone away. This year, we had about 16 different schools who participated in the league. Some of them Daily City, some of them San Francisco. A lot of them are returning teams as well, and they come together, and you can only imagine what it's like putting together a schedule for all these different schools. We have coaches who, you know, coach different teams, and so, you know, it's a big puzzle, so you can only imagine. This year, we started off our league with our coaches clinic on December 1st. We had about 120-plus volunteer coaches, head and assistant. This year, our clinic was led by Coach Elliott Smith, who is coach of Lick-Wilmer Dean High School. He's been there since 1992, and he's also a motivational speaker. And usually after a clinic, I get, "Oh, I didn't want to be here," la, 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 la. But this year, the coaches loved it. They felt like it was very inspirational. They asked for copies of the video of it, so I feel like it was a step in the right direction for the league, and hopefully we can continue that way. We also teamed up with Coaching Corp this year, and they performed a clinic on December 8th with whoever was interested, and they went through scenarios, taught how to deal with problematic situations, and that was another part of the league that really helped out. They also offered us online training to our coaches, and many of them took advantage of it. The league runs from January through March. Each team roughly has about an hour and a half practice once a week for about 10 weeks. We use about seven gyms throughout Daily City. The games, we try to give each team a minimum of six games. They make the playoffs sometimes, depending on how many teams are in each division is what determines how many games a team plays. The games are played on Friday nights and Saturdays. We use about six gyms throughout Daily City on Saturday, and we end our league with playoffs and then championship games. However, we do not have a championship game in the third grade division because it is This year, we had over 1,100 participants. We had 119 individual registrations for the Daily City teams. We had 111 teams, 76 boys and 35 girls. 16 of those were Daily City teams. Over 130 volunteer head and assistant coaches. So it was a pretty large league this year. We played about 440 games. We had 30 playoff games and 15 championship games. So it was a busy week every Friday and Saturday. We had 37 contracted referees and 10 contracted scorekeepers. We teamed up with also the NCBOA to get our referees, who are the referees that you see doing a lot of your high school games throughout the peninsula. I wanted to highlight some of our champions this year, just so you guys can see who won. This year, we had a lot of upsets, so second place, third place were beaten the first place, and it was really packed at War Memorial. Each night, we had over 500 fans coming in and out of the building, and it was loud. I actually wanted to take this time to thank the staff who actually make this program happen because without them, I couldn't do this league. They are the forefront. They see the public every Saturday and Friday. They deal with situations. They help me out, and Brian also helped out with the league a lot with organization and getting all the teams their uniforms and equipment and collection and recruiting of the volunteer coaches. And I wanted to thank you all for all your help this year. Coach G, Melanie, Xavier, and Christian weren't able to be here tonight, but John Said as well. Without you guys, the league couldn't happen. We also had our athletic directors and coaches. Ben Cote is here tonight for Polisita. That's all I see tonight. But their hard work, they do tryouts for the hundreds of kids that want to play, and they separate all the teams, they deal with the parents, they deal with all the changed game schedules, you know? Not every weekend is perfect. We have people who need to change things, things come up, and they're amazing getting the information out to everybody. We also wanted to thank Elliott Smith and Lick-Wilmer Dean for doing the clinic for free. Well, they did it for some pizza, so I appreciate them. And Coaching Corp as well. And that's all I have for you. Thank you.
Wow. Fantastic. That was a wonderful year.
It's great.
I just want to thank you guys for volunteering and putting all this time for the community and for the kids to get healthy, you know? Exercise is amazing, and 1,100 people.
Participants.
That's a lot of organization, and I want to thank you guys publicly for all your
effort. Thank you. We appreciate your effort, and hopefully we can keep doing it.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you very much to all of you.
Well, through the chair, looking back to how things were in terms of the participation from the War Memorial days to see how it's grown today and see the involvement from the Lick-Wilmer Dings and John Said participating and all the other folks here, Brian Flowers, Jorge Ngama, Xavier Lemel?
Yes.
And Christian Bellecki, and all the behind-the-scenes folks that have participated to get the program going, and especially to see the kids, just the image of the kids over here. Anytime they want to share their stories, they're welcome to come into our commission meetings to share their trophies, their woes, their experience. They're welcome to come to their recreation meeting to come share their experience, so keep the door open.
And thank you, Jeanette, for all the work you do for this, especially all the staff and all the referees and scorekeepers. Definitely shout out to Beishore for bringing home their first championship to the new school.
There you go.
It's been a couple of years, even I've gotten a shot at bringing a trophy there and haven't done it yet until they did so. Made it to the championship game. The house was absolutely rocking. It was a fun experience. We couldn't even keep like some of the fans and the kids off the court, so great job this season, definitely.
And we'd love to have you back as a coach, Nate.
Soon and soon enough.
Recruitment time.
Congratulations. I think this is amazing. It's something to be proud of in Daily City to know that we're impacting that many kids. And who knows, like, I mean, I'm sure all the coaches themselves are impacted as well just being with those kids, so congratulations. It's exciting.
Yes, thank you. Knowing that there's a lot of participants and coaches as well. 440 games, and each game had approximately how many people?
Well, you figure 10 kids on each team, they bring about three to four fans per child.
Wow.
It's a pretty busy weekend, and I'm sure they can attest to it. There's people coming in and out all day, and the relationships we build with the public at this time, it's, I mean, something can't be replaced.
Now, that's amazing, and everybody getting to know each other's within the schools and everything, it connects everyone. Thank you so much for all that presentation.
I have a question. Do you have plans for this coming year? And I don't know if there can be a possibility for the Warriors to see what we're doing here in Daily City. Maybe you guys can reach them and see what way they can sponsor or, I don't know. I'm just saying, because.
You're stepping in with the Warriors, because I'll take them.
No, I don't know if we have connections, but I'm saying Chase Stadium is going to be right here, pretty close to us.
Actually, I'm meeting with them next. In April, and that's something I can always bring up.
Yeah, because, you know, we can start training kids that can turn into future basketball players, right? So thank you guys for your, I'm just saying, I just brought the idea.
That's a great idea. And I'll take the lead on that if you need me to.
Thank you, Jeanette.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before she goes away, I also want to say my thanks to Jeanette and her staff. It is pretty amazing. It is probably the crown jewel of our recreation offering, 1,100 kids. We don't have any other program that comes close to that.
Yeah.
And the intensity of it, I can vouch both as a former coach, and I went to some regular games this year, I also went to some championship games. It's incredibly intense and enthusiastic, but thankfully also orderly. We didn't have any major conduct issues this year, and we have in the past, to be honest.
Yeah.
So thanks to everybody for making it a success.
Job well done, guys.
Good job.
And the next item under the Director's Report is a geomono pool use agreement between the City, or excuse me, the Daily City Dolphins Aquatics Club and the City of Daily City. I have hard copies of the proposed agreement for you, and I'll let Denise pass those out while I change our presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Luna and members of the Commission. I would like to introduce Mr. Brian Galley, who's the President of the Board of Directors of the Daily City Dolphins Aquatics Club. We actually have a bit of a history now. We went back in 2015, 2016, we negotiated, and I'll get all that stuff in our presentation, but that's when we became acquainted was negotiating the existing agreement between the City and the Dolphins for use of geomono pool. But before we go there, let's start out with a little history. Daily City Dolphins have been around for a long time, since before some of you were born. It was formed back in 1975 under the auspices of what was then the Daily City Parks and Recreation Department. Had a slow, slow beginning, but it grew, and by the 1980s, the Daily City Dolphins had already secured a reputation in the Bay Area as being one of the top swim clubs in the area, and they began competing out of state even back then and had events in Hawaii and in Nevada back in the 80s. Those of you who were around in the 90s and early 2000s, sadly, we know the state of geomono pool slowly, gradually deteriorated to the point where it was hardly usable. But prior to the demolition, Daily City Dolphins continued to use that as their home pool, and at that time, the monthly fee that the Dolphins paid the City was $200. When the new pool opened in 2010, brand-new negotiations happened between the Dolphins and the City, and it was a long contentious time. We'll just leave it at that. It was a struggle to get from $200 to what my predecessors thought was a more equitable agreement to use the pool. And so in 2012, the fee went from $200 a month to a graduated scale that actually topped out at $4,400 a month. See the nodding heads here? It got to the point where we basically were on the verge of bankrupting the Daily City Dolphins with those fees. And might I add, $4,400 for less lane times than they were getting when they were paying $200 an hour. In part, I should fill in too, that part of the reasoning is that when you were there for the opening of the new pool, I know Commissioner Pastor was there, it was a spectacular new asset to the community, and there was a high demand from the community for swim lessons and other things, where when the pool wasn't in such great shape, there wasn't quite as high a demand, so that the Dolphins had a little bit more time in the pool back then. So the new agreement that we achieved in 2016 lowered the monthly fee from $4,400 to what was deemed painfully reasonable at about $3,100. And rather than big leaps incrementally each year, which had happened in the last agreement, we decided that we'd tie it to the Consumer Price Index, so every year we'd adjust. And I use the word adjust because if you look at the CPI history, it's usually ticks upward 2%, 3%, 4%. But occasionally in a recession, the CPI actually will dip into the negative numbers, which would, we haven't had it, but it could potentially result in dropping the monthly fee. We don't want that to happen because that means that the economy's in tanking bad. So we do have an agreement in place now, and it is set to expire on June 30th, 2019, which is the main reason we're here tonight, to let you know that we have successfully met quite a bit over the last year and have concluded that we actually did such an outstanding job in that last agreement that both parties are satisfied with the general terms of it, and in fact, so satisfied, we're proposing that we pretty much rule that forward for a five-year extension and keep it tied to the CPI as the adjustment factor. So right now, in March of 2019, we're paying a monthly fee of $3,301.55, and that proposed fee for the beginning of the new term, because it follows our fiscal year, beginning July 1, 2019, we're proposing $3,450. And again, that would escalate every July 1 by whatever the Consumer Price Index for the San Francisco Bay Area is. And if you're wondering what it is, the most current one that we tied it to is actually 4.5%, which is probably the highest it's been in a long time. And we do have a cap. We would never raise it more than 5% in a year. The days, times, and lane assignments are pretty much as they've been in your agreement. It's kind of, it's the fine print there in Exhibit A, and it doesn't make for a great slide, but, and it varies slightly from season to season, so in the winter months, the afternoon, of course, we don't have use of the pool on weekdays during the school year because the school has that use, but beginning at 5:00 until as late as 7:30, the Dolphins can be in there. And currently, for winter and spring, it's Monday through Friday, 5:30 to 7:00. Monday through Thursday, they're using seven lanes. On Fridays, most Fridays, they're using five lanes, so for a total of 134 lane sessions, that's in 30-minute increments, which by the way, is a pretty big increase from where we were four years ago. Summer, there's a little more flexibility there. We can get in the pool a little bit earlier. And you can see there, the total number of lane sessions, not hours, is 186, and it's broken down Monday through Friday from 4:00 as late as 7:00 p.m., and as many as 11 lanes of the pool during certain hours in the summer months. And then in the fall, looks very similar to what we saw in winter and spring, 4:00 to 7:00 most days, seven lanes on Fridays down to 5:00 for a total of 198. And then we also have Saturdays, it's year-round, from 6:30 in the morning to 7:30, 11 lanes of the pool, so 22 more session lane, I want to say lane hours, it's not really an hour, 11 lane hours it would be. So that's pretty much it in a nutshell. What we're looking for is this board's either input, endorsement, recommendation. Ultimately, this would go to the City Council, hopefully within the next two months for adoption, so that we have a seamless transition from the existing agreement, which expires on June 30th, to the July 1, we have a new agreement in place to go forward, hopefully for five years. And with that, I would certainly ask Brian if he has any input or anything.
That was an excellent breakdown of that contract right there, and I just, I don't really need to add anything other than the initial contract that we signed three years ago allowed us to sort of focus on other things. I think that we brought this up last August, so we've been able to sort of focus on things that, to build the foundation of a swim team that's needed, and so we were able to put our energy into finding excellent coaching. This is head coach, Coach Mauricio Ponce. So with that, with that extra energy, we. So, with that, with that extra energy, we, we feel that we've built the foundation, and we can just sort of continue to be strong. We are focusing on more volunteer work in the community with the kids, and continued growth of the team, as much as, you know, capacity will let us. We're at, we are now at 100, just over 100 swimmers, from right around mid 50s, 60s, when we were negotiating, kind of biting our nails. So, we've had, good luck with that, a lot of, a lot of support from the family members, a lot of the existing family members are feeling a lot more, well, less pressure. Back then, they were wondering what, what was going on with, with everything, the pool, and, and just coaching, so we're feeling we're in a, we're in a great spot to move forward, and with, with this renewal, I think we can do that, you know, continue to move on and be strong, and just support the community, and, and add more kids, and, and truly do what we're trying to do, which is, you know, bring, bring kids into the world of swimming, and, and get them ready for a competitive, a more competitive aspect of it, under some stellar coaching. If we can do that, if we can stay there, we'd be, you know, so.
Thank you, Brian. And, and what I didn't include in the presentation, but part of the agreement too, allows the Dolphins to host two regional meets per year, and not unlike championship for the basketball, it's, it's crazy over there, you know, when there's a swim meet, and we'll definitely put it on, on your radar the next time there is one, because it's a fun, exciting thing to watch. And one other thing I want to, before I close and turn it over to the board, is to mention that, you know, we, we have a little bit of a symbiotic relationship with the Dolphins. We are desperate, we're at a crisis right now, shortage of lifeguards and swim instructors, and it's, it's been going on for the better part of the last year, and we're hoping through the growth of the Dolphins, and you heard, you heard the members have grown from about 50 to 60 within the last year, about, up to over 100, it's really good news, because I heard some really shocking news today, that, and, and I'll confirm it, maybe bring a presentation back in the future, that I heard that in the high schools, the swim programs are really struggling, and I heard, and I'll, I'll verify this, there are only 10 members of the Jefferson High School swim team this year, which is unbelievable. And, you know, it's, it's a little bit better at Westmore, at that beautiful pool, but it's still much lower than it has been traditionally. And I know, talking to my colleagues in Pacifica, in South San Francisco, and even further down the peninsula, they're all struggling with the same issue of finding enough lifeguards to keep our programs sustainable and vital. We don't know what to attribute it to, and there's all sorts of speculation from, you know, I'm sure the new pool at San Francisco State maybe pulled some of our potential staff away, you know, different interests, you know, mentioned that, we have 1,100 kids playing basketball, and we have a lot of kids playing basketball year-round that, you know, aren't gravitating towards swimming as, as a career, even, you know, through high school and college like we had, so I just wanted to throw that, so we're appreciative that the Dolphins are there, and potentially, you know, training grounds for future lifeguards and life, or swim instructors with the city of Daly City. And with that, I will turn it over to the chair and the board for questions and comments.
I have a question. So, we were talking about it last, last month, about we have low of lifeguards, and they have this big asset that is coming to women, women pool. So, I wonder if there is a possibility that, that instead of charging them more, charging them less, so they can provide that service to the pool, is that a possibility? Or, like, charging them less monthly, so they can provide Daly City pool with lifeguards? I don't know if that's a possibility. I'm just.
I like, I like the thinking outside the box. I, I think the reality is that the majority, correct me if I'm wrong, the majority of the members of the club are quite young, and they're, they're, they're still developing their skillset, they're not of lifeguard age and skill. But we definitely are hoping, you know, kind of like the farm system for, for future lifeguards.
Yeah.
This is an idea, because if we, if you, if we charge you guys less, you can provide with your team maybe more support for Daly City lifeguards area, I don't know.
Yeah.
I'm just not idea.
No, yes, it's great. Mauricio and Romeo, I think are, are sort of breaching that topic, and we're, we're thinking about how we could provide some of the older kids the opportunity to do that.
For you guys to pay training and et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah, there wasn't any talk about a reduced monthly rate, but, you know, I mean, I think the importance there is, is that, that there needs to be more lifeguards, and so if we can help out, you know, these kids, I'm sure would be willing to do it. You know, so that's, I think, one of the things that we can discuss going forward.
So, I want to be able to, you know, help you guys in terms of making an impact on the community, and lifeguards is one way. One issue I do know is, speaking from the youth from Bay Shore, is transportation to the pool is the issue. Probably about five times a year, they make it to a pool for a lot of the students there. So, definitely exposure is going to be an issue, and during your five-year stay at Geomonia, like, any way I could help get you guys out there, on the floor of the recreation spaces, after-school programs, even the school sites, let me know, I'll be able to help make that happen. But that's one thing, I feel like, over, over time, over the next five years, is one big way to impact that, so hopefully we can get more interest, because overall, if it's, if we're not pulling from our own community in terms of filling these lifeguard spots, then it's, it's not going to be sustainable moving forward. So, yeah, if you, you guys are an integral part of this community, you guys have been at the pools for such a, for quite some time, so definitely feel free to reach out to me, and we can make that happen.
Sure, thank you.
Awesome.
Yep.
I'm just curious, so how are the lifeguards currently recruited, being recruited? What's the recruitment effort?
How old are they?
And how, how are they recruited?
Through the schools, through the way, the way we recruit a lot of our hourly employees, citywide, and cities across California use a platform called CalOps, where there's, it's a, basically an online job platform, there are people that are interested in, in the know. If you're qualified to be a lifeguard, I think you, you kind of learn how to plug into the system, but, yeah, we get, we recruit at the colleges and, and the high schools, and we've put signs up, we've put ads up, we're appealing to everybody. I know my, my counterpart in Pacifica, they were so desperate, and I think I mentioned this at the last meeting, even did a mass appeal to the, the seniors who use the pool, in, in hopes of getting some of the, the senior population in kind of master swimmer lifeguards, and it was also an interesting approach, they, it didn't yield a single lifeguard, but that, that's how desperate they were, they were reaching out to non-traditional communities to try and bring lifeguards in, so. We'll, you know, we've got a dialogue with them, we've got, our, our human resources department does the recruitment for us, and so we can target where direct recruitments happen, and we're competing with every other city that has a pool, plus, like I said, you know, San Francisco's got several pools, and, and San Francisco State has a brand-new beautiful pool, right up the street from our admin offices on Lake Merced Boulevard, so I can't quite put my finger on why younger folks aren't gravitating towards that as a, as a part-time job, especially, you know, high school, college age, but they're, they're not, so that's a discussion for another day, I think, but.
If they take their classes, they become lifeguards, what do they get in return after some certificate, scholarship, something?
They're certified.
They get a paid position.
Well, yeah.
As a lifeguard, if they pass the class.
If they complete, if they complete the training.
How long, how long does that term, classes, or?
The lifeguard certification course is actually, it's a week-long course that we're offering in the spring.
We just offer it in spring and summer.
And so.
And what, this April then, April or May?
You don't have to go through our program.
Yeah, no.
If, if you go, it's, it's a standard, Red Cross Certification for Lifeguard. You can take it in San Francisco, you can take it in Palo Alto, once you get your card, you're qualified.
Right, right, right. No, but I'm thinking, what else can we get, so we could call the kids' attention, and also get something else more in return, and also working with Dolphins, since we're lowering the rate and all, we can actually plan to actually talk to these kids, and actually get to become lifeguards, what we're needing, even for the next year, to plan now. You know, because, as, as you said, and I've also searched myself, every other city is struggling with the same thing, so if we can think of an idea to actually, you know, work around this, because they were struggling too, so here's a chance that we could probably rethink this over.
I think what we're, we're trying to do is using those participants that are in the lessons, and in the rec swim, and through that, similar to our volunteer leadership program, you know, we're trying to steer kids in a direction, but ultimately, it's that person's choice, whether they want to move forward and be a lifeguard, because there's a lot more responsibility involved. You're not just in the pool having fun or learning, doing things, you're, you're responsible for other people, so.
I mean, can I suggest that we could table the lifeguard issue to future?
The lifeguard issue is not, what we are acting on tonight is, is a recommendation to move the agreement forward, the, the lifeguard discussion is for another day.
For sure, for sure.
It's not part of.
Because, yeah.
It was just a sidebar that kind of spun out of control a little bit. So, if, are there any more questions or discussion? So, what, what staff is requesting is, is to use, the word we typically use is "an endorsement" of the board to recommend this forward to the city council for adoption. It would be a, a motion that we seek.
I'd like to, to, to enter in a, a motion that this new agreement that we're working towards, be a motion that we take forward to the city council as a, a motion to approve?
Endorse is the word.
Endorse, endorse it, that endorse it through the, the city council, and that we take it to the next level to, to endorse it. So, with that, I'd like to see if we can get a motion to approve it.
I second the motion to endorse.
Motion and a second. I can do a roll call.
Okay.
It's fine. Commissioner Ortiz?
Yeah.
Commissioner Pastor?
Endorse.
Commissioner Flamenco?
Endorse. Like I said to you, I mean, if you, if they can work with, with us in a symbiotic way, that it will benefit both of us, it's better, yeah.
Vice Chair Lantos?
Yes.
And Chair Luna?
Yes.
Okay, our next step will be city council, thank you, Brian.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, folks.
Chair Luna and members of the Recreation Commission, it's my pleasure to reintroduce to some of you, and introduce to you for the first time for others, the ambassador of the Golden Gate Pickleball Association, and former police officer of the city of Daly City, Mr. Terry Chu. Take it away, Terry.
Okay. Thank you, Joseph, for that kind introduction. Congratulations, Ms. Luna, on your appointment to chair for the commission.
Thank you.
And also to you, Mr. Lantos, Lantos for becoming vice chair. Actually, there was a video first? Show the video first? I'm here representing both the USAPA, which is the United States for America Pickleball Association, and the Golden Gate Pickleball Club, which is a nonprofit organization formed very recently to promote the fastest-growing sport in America today. This was a news interview I did with Vern Glenn last year, and it really actually kind of gives you a, a quick representation of what's happening with this sport called pickleball.
For those who play this game, you already know the appeal. Folks play it from ages eight to 85, and this game, with a memorable name, came into my life this week. If you haven't seen it, get ready for pickleball. Any given night, from here at Palenga Rec Center in San Francisco, or any given day, here at Westlake Center in Daly City, you'll find multiple players sweating out this game with a funny name, pickleball. So, what happened? You got, you got whacked?
Yeah, both are rackets, same time.
The name pickleball, it's just, it's just, it's just weird.
Yes, so the family who invented the game, one of the families, one of the stories is that their dog was named Pickles, and so every time the ball would go off court, Pickles would go and get the ball.
Right. A $20 paddle and a wiffle ball has come a long way since Joel Pritchard and friends came up with the game in 1965. Armando Lee lost 22 pounds playing pickleball. Freddie Nadardese lost 29. What is the first thing I need to do?
First thing you gotta do is to dink the ball.
Dink the ball?
Dink the ball.
Dink the ball.
Dink.
Dink. D-A-N-K?
D-I-N-K.
A combination of tennis, badminton, and ping pong, pickleball is the fastest-growing sport in the U.S. According to the U.S. Pickleball Association, 2 million Americans played the game in 2016. This year, an estimated 3 million, and it can be played by anyone, apparently, any level, anywhere in the Bay Area.
There are 16 dedicated outdoor courts in Concord.
So, this is everywhere.
It's starting to become everywhere, but we're looking for places to play constantly, because the sport is growing so fast.
All right, now, in 2015, 68% of players were over 60. Now, the younger demographic has flooded the sport. You can throw a rock in any direction and find a pickup pickleball game.
All right.
Big thanks to the Golden Gate Pickleball Club for making that story happen.
With 25 million bookable rooms and hotels.
So, you can see that if the, if a Bay Area news organization is picking up the game pickleball, you can only imagine what the sport is going nationally. So, what I'm gonna try to, what I'm gonna do is go through this really quick, so that we can get into some of the questions that you may have. So, today's agenda, I want to talk about the game overview. Yeah, it's a real sport, explosive growth by the numbers, best-in-class city examples, I can actually read from there instead of my phone. Best-in-class examples, St. George, Utah, East Naples, Florida, and then we'll just, I'll discuss what's going currently in Daly City, and what, I would like Daly City to see the pickleball vision for the future of the sport and for the city of Daly City. A little background, I've, I'm a veteran officer, 30 years, and I am cur, here with Daly City. That's how I know Denise and Joseph, and I've met some of you already in good, in good things. I mean, I, did I pull any of you over? And if I did, I apologize, that was part of my duties here, is I was actually a motor officer. My current status is that I am retired, and in order for me to give back to the community that helped me raise my family and, and give me a job, I'm trying to bring back, I actually volunteer as the varsity and junior varsity girls volleyball coach at Westmore High School. I'm in my sixth season as an assistant volleyball coach for Rex Mungahead at Westmore, so that's all volunteer. And then I was able to bring pickleball to Daly City from that volunteerism, because a friend of my, Westmore High School needed a volunteer, needed a coach for tennis, and the friend that got me into pickleball became the tennis coach for Westmore as a volunteer. And then he was able to meet with city staff one day, and as Joseph mentioned once before, timing, I've, timing has been everything, and we were able to start a pickleball program in 46 days from the first day that I played in 2016. Let's see now. Okay, that was the video. Okay, we talk about explosive growth. 2010, there were about 100,000 players, in 2015, 2.46 million players, and these are statistics from the Sports and Fitness Industry Association. That covers all sport, that association covers all sports in the country. Seniors are a big part. Currently, the day, well, I'll go into the current Daly City program as I go through this. Seniors are a big part of the sports, but kids are getting into it as well. Many middle schools and high schools and universities have incorporated this sport into the sport curriculum. The USAPA is in negotiations right now. USAPA is in negotiations right now with AAU to create a college curriculum, a competitive college curriculum. So colleges are picking up this sport as well. I wish I got into this game sooner. My daughters could have brought this to the colleges a day I went to to start a club, and that's how the sports are getting started at the college level. Unfortunately, my daughter, as a former volleyball player, what happened was she started a archery club to build her resume when she was in college. So at her college, she was able to start a club, which is still going on today. Known places to play, pickleball in the U.S. now exceeds 4,000 locations. I have an updated fact sheet. I'll give you the numbers. On the website, it shows 4,000 locations since 2010, 912 locations added in 2015 alone for an average of 76 new locations per month. This includes, this is, number goes for indoor courts as well as outdoor courts. Okay, the 2015 national tournament with the open and senior tournament, the medal matches streaming live. This past year, the national tournament was held at Indian Wells Tennis Center. So if some of you are familiar with tennis, yes, Indian Wells is like the premier west coast tennis venue. It's where they have the BNP Paribas Open. They just had the major tournament down there. So they've got, they've gone into a five-year contract with the USAPA to hold the national tournament for the next four years at Indian Wells. So if Indian Wells is gonna spend their own money to bring, and they form a partnership with Margaritaville. So Margaritaville, USAPA is hosting the national tournament in Southern California at Indian Wells Tennis Center. Let's see. And so in 2015, they had 807 registered players. They had 2,038 matches, players from 38 states and three provinces, 26 event sponsors. And the sponsors, they, they're paddle manufacturers, ball manufacturers, shoe manufacturers, I mean, everything. Clothing, it's amazing. I can talk with you about all the stuff that I had to do because my clothing, all my clothes has changed now. It's all tennis. Everything's all tennis now, or pickleball. Live streaming. So at the national tournament, ESPN televised the national tournament. So ESPN2 actually had televised three hours worth of pickleball. So it's getting national, it's getting national attention, not only in our country, but in other countries as well. We have a strong governing body. The USAPA is a national pickleball association, which governs everything that we do, types of balls that we use, the types of paddles, how the paddles are constructed. They, they limit the ability of the manufacturers to put a texture on the paddle face. It has to have a certain coefficient of friction so that one paddle doesn't put more spin on the ball than another paddle company. So they all have to meet these guidelines. Paddles range in different sizes and shapes, but each one has to have the minimum requirements or maximum requirement for total length and width. So, but there are different styles of paddles here. I can show you if you wish to kind of handle them. A couple of you guys have come out to play, in fact. So for those of you who have not, I will give you the dates and times that we currently host here in Daly City. Okay, St. George, Utah is the best-in-class example. They got 12 courts. They actually built another 12, which moved them up to 24 outdoor courts. They run clinics. They have local tournaments. They hosted the Western Regionals. The pickleball is growing so fast that the Western region used to consist of four states, or five, and because it's become so popular, the Western region only consists of two states now. It's California and Hawaii is the West region. Then you got the Northwest region, which consists of Washington, Oregon, and what's the next state over? Idaho? Idaho? So the growth is so, the growth is so fast that the numbers are just, we can't accommodate all the players that are coming onto the sport. My personal example is I represent the district as a district ambassador. So on my team, originally when I became the district ambassador, I had 28 team members on my team. That was the 10 Bay Area counties. The growth of pickleball is growing so fast, I had to divide the district into three districts. So now my district is much smaller. So my, my team is now gone from 28 to 11 ambassadors. And so my district consists of Marin, San Francisco, San Mateo, and Santa Cruz. And then the Southern, East Bay District consists of Alameda, Contra Costa, and Santa Clara. Now, Contra Costa and Santa Clara are the biggest two counties in the Bay Area. You put those two together, you add everybody else up, they still got more people in their counties, for the rest of the counties. And then we have the North Bay, is it the North Bay we call them? North Bay region, which consists of Napa, Sonoma, Solano, and there's one more I can't remember over there. But there's, that comes to North Bay. So we divided the area into three. I had one, we had one, now we got three. So it's because of the, the sport is so popular among adults and youth are getting more involved. Let's see, Naples, Florida. So there's a place in Florida, it's called The Villages. It's a senior residential community. They have 200 outdoor courts, permanent outdoor courts. They're full every day, all day long. They're full. That's how popular the sport is with the senior community. The courts are much smaller than tennis courts. They're actually the same diameter as a badminton court. Okay, so the current situation here in Daly City. So we started pickleball October 4th, 2016 at the Pacelli Gym. We played two days a week, and the hopes were that we would expand the program, but we were sharing the gyms with everybody. So we, we have to, we, you know, we were able to get the times that we get to provide players a venue to play. I wanted to thank the city recently for giving me a really big Christmas gift because when I came back from Christmas, the new lights at the War Memorial were fantastic. It went from, literally from night to day. Literally. It was very, it was, the lighting was, was there, but it wasn't bright enough to play pickleball for individuals of my age. Now, I don't want to tell you really how old I am, but at my age, I had some eye issues, and so it was difficult to see the balls in the gym. But since the new lights have been there, the War Memorial now is probably the best indoor pickleball venue in the peninsula. I don't want to just, you know, pat Daly City on the back for that, but it's, we're the only ones that have dedicated painted pickleball court lines. Recreation and had painted the line, permanent lines for, for pickleball in the gym. And it's, it's clear, it's clear to see the court lines. It's, it's part of the game because they got what they call the non-volley zone or the kitchen, which changes a game dramatically from tennis. So pickleball is a game of angles, and you don't have to be this great power hitter like Federer or any of the, or any of the, you know, like the Serena Sisters or whatever. The pickleball will come in and it's, it's what they call the short game where the dinking part, the shorter game changes the dynamics of this game dramatically. It just, and then it basically goes, the other cities will provide courts, and then they're able to host and raise funds by tournaments. So I'm just gonna give you some quick numbers. So if you have a tournament of 200 players and the players are paying $50 each, for a one- to two-day tournament, you raise $10,000 in one tournament at $50 each. That's kind of like where the funds are coming from if we were to host a tournament. There are costs, but the initial cost after those are paid off, the money that would be coming in to benefit the city or some kind of partnership, we can provide that kind of fundraising for the city. Okay? So as you can see here, this is what, kind of like the before and after picture. You got a picture of one, two, three, four, five tennis courts that were just, and then they redid them. So you see the smaller courts are pickleball courts, and then the ones on the right, they're tennis courts. So tennis is a popular sport, but it's been kind of, kind of waning a little bit or staying, staying level. In conversations with my friends in the tennis world, they said that, you know, the United States hasn't had a really good contender, a new contender in tennis. We're trying to find out, we're kind of wondering how come that, that's, you know, tennis, we're not getting a strong player to play, you know, tennis. So you look at it through the schools and things like that. It's just, we're not, they're not getting the players as they once did. But tennis is still a popular sport. So if the city were to decide to build some kind of facility that shares, it could be done. Whether or not one group of player, one group of players like the sound, because the pickleball makes a distinctive sound. So if you can imagine playing a ping pong on a table that's big enough for you to stand on, that's, that's how the game is. It's fun. It's, it's really exciting to play. It's very easy to learn, but it takes a long time to master. Currently, I am the only ambassador for, that represents Daly City and San Mateo. We're gonna grow that soon. My partner who got me into this, Freddie Nardarise, he's currently an ambassador for San Francisco. San Francisco had just built six dedicated outdoor courts. And those courts are being used like every day now, when the weather permits. Okay, so the vision, if the city of Daly City were to say, hey, look, let's, we could maybe do something with some of the tennis courts that need to be redone. So if you build 16 courts, we will actually have the largest dedicated court system in the Bay Area. I made a mistake. Concord only has 14. So by building a 16-court venue, we will have the biggest venue in the Bay Area. If we were to build 24 courts, the city could compete with St. George for the USAPA Western Regional Tournament. So last year, the West Regionals were held at the Claremont Tennis Center in Southern California, where they were able to put up temporary net systems, similar to the ones that we're using now indoors. They were able to put up 35 courts. They had 700 participants at that tournament for a four-day event. So that's, and the amount of money that people paid to participate in that is, it was, is higher than the $50 that I mentioned to you because they'll pay a 50, a 6, $70 entry fee, and then they'll pay an additional 10 to $15 to enter each event. Because they have singles, men's and women's singles, doubles, men's doubles, women's doubles, and then mixed doubles. And the most popular are the doubles. Because singles, if you're a tennis player, singles provides that same, same type of game as tennis. So that's the end of the video presentation. If you have any questions on history of the sport, I can give you more information on the history of the sport. I do have some current numbers. Let's see. Let's see. The Sports and Fitness Industry Association for 2017 reported that pickleball currently has 3.1 million players in the United States, and that's a 12% increase over the previous year. 1.57 million were casual participants who play one to seven times a year. Those are tournaments. 930,000 were core participants who can, who play in eight or more tournaments a year. The rate of growth in participation from 2014 to 2015 was 1.8%, from 2.14 million to 2.5 million. And that's just a rough estimate because it's probably, the numbers are bigger, but like we all want to talk about numbers, it's always more on the conservative side. So if you have any questions?
I have a comment. I want to thank you, Terry, for your passion for this game. And there are four things that I notice in pickleball that is really good. First is gender inclusive, and that's something that I support is gender equality, because that game, it can be played by women and men at the same time. The second of all is age incorporated. So it doesn't matter what age you have, you can play that game.
I'm glad you brought that up.
Yeah.
So my Tuesdays and Thursdays, folks that come to play, there's a gentleman who has, who started with us in 2016, is still, he comes back all the time. He's 80 years old, and he's playing pickleball. And the, besides the sport itself, it's, it's all-inclusive. So if you were to come to the venue, the first thing that I would say is, one, I don't know you. So two, I go and say, hi, you're interested? Let's play. So that's, that's our goal. Our goal, my, my, part of my duties as an ambassador is to make the sport open for everyone. So we bring, I bring everybody in. I see them walking into the gym. If I don't recognize you, I'll go, hi, my name is Terry. Please come on in. If you have any questions, I'll sit down with them and talk to them about, you know, the type of clothing for safety. I, I tout safety. So the first thing I do is I say, you gotta have the proper shoes. You can't wear flip-flops. I wear eye protection all the time. So I promote eye protection. If they come and they want to learn how to play, I teach them for free. I don't charge. We give, you know, we're, we're able to accept the, the, the money to come in for the gym use, you know, and then from there, it's like, let's play. Everyone can play this game. Like Nadia said, it, what got me into the sport was the second or third time that I was playing, I went to another indoor venue in San Mateo County, and two, I played against two 70-year-old women, and they beat me not once, but twice because they had good control of the ball. I thought, you know, hey, I can come up and I can hit the ball, you know, really fast, and, you know, I'm still in pretty good shape, and I can get around. They just, I was running all over the court, and I couldn't score a point. So that brought me back into the game. But the, the, the best part of the sport is the socialization aspects when you're waiting to play. And then the, the, the third benefit is the health benefit. I can speak personally. I lost 20 pounds since that first year I played, but then I became fanatical. I was playing every day, but I wasn't playing the game every day. What I was doing was I was drilling. Practice, you know, everybody says practice makes perfect. So I would practice two hours a day, and so I dropped 20 pounds. But my resting heart rate is 50 now.
Yeah. I had a question for you about, so I understand your passion for the game. I also understand that you want to grow. You're, as an ambassador of the game, you're trying to look for more members, new, new folks to play the game. What does that look like in Daly City right now? What gyms are you in, as well as just a rough number of attendance and the impact that you feel like has been making in the community?
Okay, so indoor play is governed by outdoor weather. Does that make sense?
Because...
If it's a nice day outside, people are gonna go play outside.
Okay.
But there's only two dedicated outdoor courts in the Bay Area or close by to Daly City. So San Francisco has six at the Lewis Sutter Playground, which is in the John McLaren at University in Woolsey Avenue. Foster City was the first one to build six dedicated outdoor pickleball courts in Foster City. So there's six there. And they're in discussions right now of building six more, of taking, because there's tennis courts that are right next to the current pickleball courts and the tennis courts there. They're actually in discussions right now, preparing to, wanting to take those over and build pickleball courts there. Daly City has a unique, right now, we're in a good spot, to be honest with you, because San Francisco, the tennis center at Golden Gate Park is going to be closed next month. They're going into a major renovation, and they're gonna be torn down to build a brand-new, state-of-the-art tennis facility. So rumor has it, they're gonna put a pickleball court on it. A pickleball court. So everybody, the benefits for, for, for us as a city, so let me get back to your numbers. So today we had 24 players from the hours of 11 to 2. Tuesdays and Thursdays, we, we usually get between 20 and 30 players every Tuesday and Thursday from 11 to 2. And we recently were given Sunday nights at the War Memorial from 6 to 9. So at the war, we're able to share the gym with volleyball players. So from seven, for the first hour, we get the use of three courts. And then when volleyball's over, then we get the use of the other gym, and we add another three courts, giving us six indoor courts. And then when volleyball's over, then we get the use of the other gym, and we add another three courts, giving us six indoor courts total.
And they're, those that are all painted in for both courts over there?
Yes, so, Pacelli has dedicated painted lines, and War Memorial has dedicated painted court lines. And they're, they're not badminton courts, cause you can't play on a badminton court if you have the line, if you're at a, if you have a school with a gym that has a badminton court lines on there, you can play on that badminton court. But the only difference is six inches on each side of the net. So with the non-volley zone on a pickleball court, it's a seven, seven feet from the net. And so that one foot as actually makes a big difference when you're playing this game.
Yeah, and the reason why I ask, and I'm actually pretty familiar with the pickleball courts, because there's actually three more courts that's at Bay Shore Community Center, it's drawn in, the nets are there as well as, uh, uh, general use paddles as well. Um, one of those things in the last couple of years, I've never really seen anybody come into play. Um, at my time working there, we implemented it into like daily programming for the youth, but at the same time, for us, it's so new, we've never really seen it, we don't know strategy, we don't know this, so.
Here you go, I gave you the USAPA handout, which gives history, explains the sport, the growth of the sport, and what the association does. My, my card is attached to that.
Sure.
You call me, I'll meet with you, you wanna start, you wanna start a youth program at the Bay Shore, oh yeah, I'll be there for you.
Definitely, and then, cause especially as a retired officer here from Daly City, one of the, and you, you know Bay Shore, you know how it is.
I know Bay Shore very well, yes.
You know they're ready to play, so.
And Garnet Robertson was my last assigned school before I retired, so I created a relationship with the school there, but my understanding is it's no longer there.
So we actually have nine pickleball courts in Daly City, so.
So if you were to, if you wanted to bring in players to that facility, we, we can discuss, we can talk about, I can give you ideas to, to open the gym and, and times and, and uses and, and mini tournaments and things like that.
Perhaps for your community as well, because since it's serving the people here at Daly City, another location, possibly another time, could table that for some time in the future.
Yeah. Thank you.
Great.
Um, I just wanna say thank you for giving us an update, um, it sounds like it's grown, um, extremely well since the last update. Just a curious question, um, as far as hosting a tournament, how many, what's the minimum number of courts you would need to have a tournament?
Okay, so if we, so, we, I was thinking about hosting a indoor tournament, because in the wintertime, you wanna be indoors because it, it's raining. And, and how, trying to host an outdoor tournament during this time of the year, it's, it's difficult.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so, uh, I, I believe there's restrictions on the facility use because city council has to decide on fee schedule. So a fee schedule needs, some, somebody needs to go over, unless it's a site issue, I don't, I was, I was told that there was, um, city council had to approve a fee schedule if we were to host a tournament at War Memorial. That was what I was told, so I, I don't, I don't know what the procedures are on that. Uh, if this, if, uh, Library and Rex wanted to run an indoor tournament for three, if we get six courts indoors, you could probably get a hundred, a hundred fifty players.
Okay.
For a two-day tournament.
What would the revenue be on, having that just?
You know, I, I, off the, like I said, off the top of my head, if you, if you charge every player just fifty bucks, if you had two hundred, that's ten grand right there, that's the number I can, I remember. So if you drop it down, then it, it's less, if you make the fee like a fifteen or twenty-dollar entry fee, then the price gets cut in half. But it's, it's, are you, are we trying to promote the sport to bring people to come see the venue? Cause right now, I'm trying to get more people to come to the venue, so when we were given that first day to, uh, War Memorial, I got eighty people into that gym, I think you guys were there that day.
I was there.
Got ninety-five people in the gym, uh, it was free, but ninety, I got, I got ninety-five people there. So, uh, last Sunday, I was out of town, so last Sunday, they were only able to get players to open four courts. But again, that's, you know, on the weekends, the Sunday night seems to be a good night for players, cause it's after church and stuff, and then they have dinner, and then they come out and play Sunday night. Before, and then it's, starts early enough and ends early enough so that people can go to work the next day.
And, um, how many times would you need the, to be in a tournament, like, say, within a month and two, one weekend, three weekends?
You mean, how long would it take to, to host?
How many tournaments in a month, say?
Oh, there's a tournament every weekend. If you look, if you were to go to turn, uh, pickleballtournaments.com and there, and you just go to this California, which is, everything's broken down by state, there's a pickleball tournament almost every weekend, Southern California has the most, because they got the most tennis courts. That are, they got the most places to play, and it doesn't rain that much down there, they just, in fact, the tournament that was held last weekend were held at the Lakes, and it was hosted by Marcin Ropadeski. He is one of the national champion players, a pickleball former tennis player, and it, he hosts the tournament. And they, it was just this past weekend.
How, how many, uh, courts in the Pacelli gym?
We have, there's six there.
Six courts.
At Pacelli. So you could, I mean, depending upon how many days you wanted to commit to a tournament, you could, you know, you could break it down. You could do a Friday, Saturday, Sunday, is usually, they usually do a three-day tournament, so that they can provide, uh, men, the, the men's doubles, the women's doubles, the mixed doubles, and then singles, if you wanted to add that to the mix, so.
Cause looking at the number of people that would come by and take the parking spot, it almost seems like the Pacelli gym would be better for the parking.
Parking's, yeah, there's better parking near the Pacelli, you know, War Memorial, I mean, it, there's challenges as well, but it, those things could be, uh, you know, we can negotiate with the neighborhood, my idea is to meet with, well, First National Bank's no longer there, right, it's another bank, right?
Right.
So, wouldn't it be all right for us to ask permission to allow people to park in the parking lot during off-banking hours? I, I would a- ask, you know, it's better to ask than, and ask for permission and see if they're willing to be part of the, the community to allow for additional parking during those kinda days. If they can fill a thousand players for basketball at the War Memorial, well, you figure they can, we can do the same for a pickleball. You know, even though parking may be tight, there, there's still a parking available, you just have to walk a little further. But we're all in good shape after, cause we play.
Yeah, um, what about?
I'm sorry, but the idea would be, I know the city's in, in, in looking into redeveloping the current outdoor spaces. So it would be a really good opportunity for the city to decide if, maybe if they can find it within uh, the city budget to, when they redo the outdoor spaces, to maybe, um, take into consideration, uh, converting some of the outdoor, uh, tennis courts to pickleball courts.
And the tournament would return that revenue back to the fund costs?
But there, I don't know if you would be able to call it a return of revenue?
No, not return, but, you know, grow.
But we could, well, as, 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 uh, one of the founding members of the Golden Gate Pickleball Club, we are a five oh one C three non-status organization with, with our tax ID. And we can provide a partnership to the city. Uh, we would help in maintaining the courts, we would help the city in partnership with help, probably maybe running a tournament. Uh, I would provide free classes to new players. Um, the idea would be if courts were built, if we had the facility, it's like, you build it, people will come.
Yeah.
Yeah, you, we build a facility in Daly City, we would be the premier location. Because when I put a tournament out, it's gonna be, uh, come to the San Francisco Bay Area to Daly City for, I don't know, raise the roof tournament, because I'm thinking, in five, ten years, my, the plan is, could we build a roof over the tennis, o- over the pickleball court so that we can play twenty, uh, three hundred sixty-five days out of the year? Right, so, instead of asking the city to come up with the money, we would, as an organization, try to raise the funds to put a roof.
Right.
Right, so, the partnership would be for us as a nonprofit organization to take some of the burden away from, off of the city, because I know that the city is, is always looking for alternative ways to, to do things. So, uh, this partnership would benefit. We could rate, like I said, we could, our, our organization would have people come out to maintain the courts and having the tournament here, you're twenty minutes from the airport, uh, you're twenty minutes from San Francisco. Uh, the national, it, pickleball is becoming a destination sport. I'm, I'm going on a cruise soon, and all Princess Cruise ships now offer pickleball on the ship. So they play on the ships. Uh, we have a sister club in Japan, uh, pickleball club, they play in Japan, Singapore, Malaysia, Philippines now, uh, Costa Rica, they're playing, uh, there's a group in Serbia that just started, uh, Australia. Uh, we're working towards getting the sport into the Olympics. So it's not going away, we're actually, the sport is growing that much.
Um, just to be on the same page, um, from your slide, I believe it was sixteen courts in order to host a national tournament?
It, it would be, yeah, close, minimum, that would be the minimum number of courts.
Okay, and ideally, it would be on one location, correct?
Yes.
Versus spread out into different areas of?
Yeah, because what happens is when, if, if you ever get a chance to go to a tournament, all the, everything's in the one location, it makes for a more festive atmosphere. So the vendors will come, whether they're, your food vendors, or your, uh, manufacturers, and they will all set up their, their informational booths, or sell their paddles, or sell their balls, or shirts, and whatever. And then you can all just go to one place, cause when I was at the Western Regionals at the Claremont, my wife would go by and kinda shop at all the, all the little booths, cause they had clothing, uh, jewelry, they got pickleball jewelry, things like that, so, I mean, it's, you could really make this a full community effort, I mean, I really, I really envisioned, you know, food trucks, you know, if we were to host the tournament at Pacelli, then there'd be food trucks coming in, everyone from the community come down, you can make it a community event. Not just a pickleball tournament, but you could provide a venue where, uh, students from a high school can come in and, and raise funds for their high school as part of the, as part of the festivities. Uh, manufacturers, uh, I prefer Selkirk as a paddle, I, this is my personal one here. Um, they, we could possibly ask them if they were, or possibly ask a manufacturer, says, hey, would you like the naming rights to the complex? We could ask them for donations, I, I mean, these are, you know, uh, there's a lot of ideas that I have in fundraising and working in partnership with the city, if we were, if the city were to uh, consider building dedicated outdoor courts.
It's not just a game, the, the good thing I like about pickleball myself is how much you socialize with people. How many people I've seen in Daly City, I've gone to myself in Concord, and seen and meet new people, how it connects you with the people in the community, and it's something great you've brought along this whole time and, and worked together as a retired officer to the community. And, um, seeing it over the past two years, being here, it's, I, I think what your vision is, is, it can be much bigger and brighter for the city, because, yeah. It's just like saying, hey, come and play it, that's all we're really saying, and enjoy that fun. Once they see it and experience it, they pass the word along, and then it grows, that's the part. That, that's why it's expanding so much and everybody wants to play it elsewhere, but there's no main locat-ation at the Bay Area. Sixteen courts to actually make a tournament, right, and having, say?
That would be like, yeah, let's, let's do, I mean, I, I understand that there's, there's a lot of things involved, and if we were to start off with just six courts, yeah, we could do that too. You know, you could still host a small tournament with six courts, you know, I mean, but, i- i- if, and we, the, I, I know that the city has obligations and challenges for other stuff. And there's so many other, uh, recreation that's out there, um, you know, s- so I get it, you know, if we can, if, if they would just consider, if the city would just consider dedicated pickleball courts, the number would be up to them. I mean, if it was up to me, I would find a venue and, I'd take over a spot, and I'd have sixteen dedicated outdoor courts, and then I'd have another sixteen with a roof over it, so that you can play outdoors. Uh, you have an outdoor court surface, but on half of them, you, you, you can play all year round and be out of the rain. I mean, that would be my, that would be my ideal thing, you'd have a juice bar, and, you know, you let, you employ the local kids. Uh, I would start a club at the high schools, to start pickleball at the high schools. I've, I've done a, a two-week clinic at Jefferson last year. Uh, and I've introduced the sport to Westmore High School, uh, but I'm kinda running into some challenges there, but you know, they were introduced to the sport, so my goal is to bring it back, cause not only is it, everyone can play this game, but what other game can you guys play if you had children and your grandchildren?
Yeah.
So very recently, Nash, two women national, uh, champions were playing against a mother-daughter team, daughters twelve. Guess who won? The mom and the daughter won, and they beat two, uh, two, uh, like, the number two, number three players in the nation. That's pretty darn good, I mean, I'm, I'm hoping that when the time comes, when, when I have, get grandkids, if I'm blessed enough to get grandkids, that I will be able to play this game with my grandkids. And be competitive at the same time.
Like I said, um, I like the inclusive with gender, age, and special needs as well. And also it beats, um, obesity, and that's something that is supposed to be growing by two thousand twenty-something, so. This is, to me, is the game of the future that is starting, and I hope my kids have the opportunity to play it in the schools as well, you know, I see that it's growing nationally and internationally. So if we can open a space to play outdoors and even including in the schools, it could be amazing.
And you mentioned that it's all-inclusive, uh, there is a, a wheelchair program for pair, uh, for, uh, wheelchair-bound players. So there's no, we don't have a venue in the area that can accommodate that yet, but we can. Actually, I mean.
That would be nice if Daly City is the first city that incorporates a special need pickleball.
We're very close, there's, there's a facility in San Francisco right across the border that, 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 uh, uh, has, uh, special needs, uh, children there and adults, and I'm actually in, trying to discuss with another player how we can get into the facility to introduce the sport to them. I can't, it's, it's, I can't remem- it's by the zoo.
Janet Pomeroy.
That, that's at the Pomeroy Center, yeah, thank, thank, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much for the update.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Charles. Appreciate it. I'd like to ask, can we pass this in adoption to the council?
This was a ten-minute informational presentation that Mr. Chu asked to present, there's no action required.
Okay, uh, moving on to the commissioner's report, does anyone have a report?
Um, actually, I just, is this like our time to speak? If that's what it is, alright, alright, so, uh, one thing, if I could just add to the agenda for next week, um, a presenti- or?
Be monthly.
Or next month, sorry, yeah, you're right, you're right, so, uh, pres- um, uh, add to agenda next month, um, the San Francisco Forty Niners, uh, flag football prep program. Um, last year, I was a coach and actually got, be one of two, uh, two programs that piloted the program in the Bay Area, um, last year. Uh, we ran it out of Bay Shore Community Center, and I don't wanna go too much into detail, we could talk about it next month, but, um, uh, there's interest in expanding the program throughout the city, I know there's been a void for football for the last couple of years, and football's been like a passion for me, for, um, if you could ask everybody in, in recreation, I've been coaching there for like the last ten years. And, um, in the meantime, since the program has, there's been a void, we've been seeking elsewhere, or building a program of our own at the space, um, cause in, at Bay Shore, that's a big, uh, is, it, football is life for a lot of these kids, and, and it was, it was good to have the opportunity back, so now that, um, uh, my affiliation with the Forty Niners, they're, you know, they're a little, you mentioned with the Warriors, now we have opportunity with that.
Nice.
Um, so I just wanna report that next week, I'm actually speaking on behalf as a former coach, uh, for the coaches meeting at Santa Clara, um, and I can report back in terms of that for you guys next month, uh, during the time, uh, of the presentation. Um, and I could report back in terms of that for you guys next month, uh, during the time, uh, of the presentation.
Ask them if they, when they invest in Daly City.
You guys could ask next month.
Okay, okay.
Sure thing.
Add in the agenda.
Any other updates? I just have one to add. Um, so Luis and I attended the Open Master Plan Committee meeting last month. Um, the third meeting within the community and it was really great. They gave us an update on, um, all of the community outreach that they've been doing and all the results. And so it was really great to see the community really excited and really involved. Um, we've seen a lot of suggestions on, you know, what to improve, um, things like the playgrounds, more picnic areas, restrooms, um, you know, more pickleball courts, of course, and more lighting and even specific park recommendations on Geller Park, Hillside Park. So, um, we'll continue to attend those and, but so far.
And I think sometime down the line, that will be part of the recreation meeting.
Absolutely, that is, that's part of the contract they have is to make a presentation, their findings to this body and also to the city council. So that's coming up shortly, I hope, within the next couple of months.
Oh, okay.
They've, they've finished all their outreach and community meetings, so they're putting the report together now.
Yeah. If there aren't any other updates, uh, we could move on to announcements.
Sure, just a couple of quick ones. This week, our annual volunteer appreciation luncheon will happen on Thursday, March twenty eighth. And as to recognize the volunteers that work so hard at the Dolger Senior Center and also at the Lincoln Community Center, and I believe we even have some from War Memorial, that's going to be at Cafe Dolger from eleven thirty to one. And it's the one day of the year where the volunteers get to be the guests and have other people wait on them. So they will be our guests for lunch. And then on Saturday, April thirteenth, we have our Spring Fun Day, our annual egg hunt that is co-sponsored by the Daly City Host Lions Club. New venue this year, it's moving to Westlake Park, a little better parking situation access. And that will be Saturday, April thirteenth. Registration, uh, starts at ten o'clock in the morning and of course, that's free to the youth of our community. And the last announcement we have is our growing gigantic active adult senior resource and fitness fair is coming back to Pacelli Gym this May, Thursday, May twenty-third. And that starts at nine thirty in the morning to noon. It's free and seniors by the hundreds lineup before the doors even open. It's a pretty big event over there. And that's it for announcements, we'll have more for you next month.
Great, um, and any, since we do have members of the public here today, any public comments?
No.
Good evening, um, everyone. I, I know it's a late evening for each and every one of you, but it's nice to see you all in action. I just wanna say and extend my thank you to each and every one of you as commissioners and congratulations on the reorganization. And also for, um, a lot of the programming that you provide input towards, um, for our community. Um, look forward to see what the open, um, uh, master plan is gonna be within the open spaces. Um, exciting to see changes within, uh, our community. And so I just wanna extend, uh, my heartfelt thanks to each and every one of you. Commissioner Ortiz, Commissioner Pastor, uh, Chair Luna and Vice Chair Landoz and Commissioner Flamenco. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So if, uh, no other announcements, um, I'd like to adjourn this meeting. And our next meeting will be Tuesday, April twenty-third at seven PM.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Oh. Do I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Second.
Meeting adjourned.